Okay, it's ten o'clock, someone called this meeting order. No call.
Paul Story.
Yeah.
Park and Fair.
Yeah. Item number three will be recognized guest, we passed around our sign in sheet, like thank everybody for being here. We have coffee available if anybody wants any. Once again, thank everybody for being here. Item number four will be new business. Randy, I got a question. I want to just let you know that go off out here, you didn't notice that?
Uh, five, yeah.
Okay.
There's one burned out too.
Right, I knew that but I just sent you aware of it. I figured it was, but I was gonna ask you.
Uh, talked to Donnie about it back when they first put him up and now that he's had time.
That's fine, that's fine, I just want...
They are LED so they're not burning very...
Right, I, it's not a problem.
It should go off with the rest of them. Cause they're all right there together.
I know you present on the back of the works and thought you might, if anyone knows about it, that's good enough.
I might, I might remain.
On our meeting Thursday, uh, I called Aaron after the meeting, Aaron would you like to let them know on that grant?
So, part of my salary in the past had been subsidized by the state and it's not a, if there's a program, a grant program, that's called an MPG grant program and that, they stopped, they believe, according to the record, stopped in the first quarter. We stopped receiving those funds in the first quarter of two thousand sixteen. And so the reason that it stopped was non-compliance. Uh, there's reports that have to go in, how the money's being utilized, so on and so forth. For some reason they got the first quarter but they didn't get their next quarter. And so we were just, became out of compliance with that. The process of going back about that is we just reapply, well actually we'll try to reinstate the grants, a little bit easier than reapplying for the grant. My district supervisor coordinator said he had, doesn't have a problem with that, but the problem, the problem we're gonna encounter getting it reinstated is the guy who has to sign off on it is the head of the state at emergency management. He's in Texas for the foreseeable future, they're saying the earliest he might be back is six and eight weeks. So, it, that's the very earliest predictions right now because of the mess that's going down in Houston. Um, on a side note to that as well, Oklahoma resources might get diverted as well for this next hurricane coming up that's gonna, looks like it might hit Florida, the state of Florida is sending in a state of emergency request. They've already, the state has it, for the feds to go ahead and help out, start sending resources to state for that one. So, Oklahoma resources are really pulled in right now as far as who's available and manpower and administrative power, people that have to sign off on things. So, the earliest, best case scenario, we're looking at November, whenever he probably get back in and sign off on that stuff. So, I mean, it has put, what's going on down there has put state emergency management, everything that we have going on, even down to a local level, has put everything on hiatus and hold. I mean, it's just, everything's in the, in the, on the back burner until they get Texas under control. And if Florida breaks out the way they're predicting, it's gonna be even longer. So, that's, to answer your question on that, it's gonna be a while before that grant. Even if I had the paperwork submitted today, best case scenario, two months before it's able to get, get done. Um, couple other things on what's going on on my end, we did get the, the third floor painted, prepped, ready to go. We're ready to, we've got the holes patched in the floor, we're ready to put, start moving things in. Yesterday, we had a report of a fire, a hay trailer caught on fire at the highway nine in Kanema. Got a Kyoto and Southside responded, myself as well. Uh, wanna thank district two for getting a dozer out there, we called district one, couldn't get ahold of this dozer guy, appreciate, you know, you guys trying, we got district two out there with their dozer for an emergency fire break if we needed it. Good cooperation amongst everybody, it was just phenomenal deal. On the road though, where the dozer was operating, you guys wanna have some repair. I mean, you can still get through it, but it's gonna have, have some repair that has to happen where the dozer was working. So, I just wanna give you a heads up on that deal. Also, with FEMA working with all of our individuals, I'm backed up a little bit, FEMA working with all of our individuals and our disasters that we, we had. To most of Texas is in region six for FEMA, we're in region five. But the majority of region five FEMA has been pulled down to region six to help out with that disaster relief. And it probably, on the same note, what I said earlier, a lot of our pit resources and manpower are gonna be pulled down to Florida, that hits Florida real hard like they're predicting, so. Sandra talked to me about getting individuals, trustees up here for tomorrow, looks like we got stuff ready to dispose of, get rid of manpower. I'm on board with it, if everybody else is, so we're ready and ready to go. Anybody got any questions for me?
No, but thank you for that Dave.
Yes sir, I, I wanna push this again, we talked about it last week. Getting those sides of the road brush off real hot and heavy because man, if this had happened and we didn't have such a green area where they had pushed those hay bales off that trailer, if it had been dry, it would have taken off and headed northeast the way the wind was blowing because the bales got pushed off into a ditch that was really grown up. And so, it, it was a perfect example of what could have happened but didn't. And so, I just wanna re-emphasize that, whenever we get a chance, we need to really hammer these roadways, getting a brush hog, we're close and wide out, so, thank you guys.
Thank you for all your extra effort.
Mike and Cam.
First of all, we got fifty-eight inmates this morning.
We're down there Paul.
Well, I, I say we're down, but tonight we might have seven.
Well, I, I understand.
You never know, we're at fifty-eight this morning. Five at court, we've got a new program going with the judge's office and the court clerk's office. If you have a cash failure to pay warrant, what we've implemented is a two hundred and fifty dollar program. If you have a ten thousand dollar cash warrant, you come in, you pay two fifty, the warrant serves. You have a court date which will be the second, which will be two, two Wednesdays from the day you get released. You come in on that court date, the judge sets you back up on your payment plan. If you miss that payment again, then there's another warrant issued, we pick you back up, it's another two fifty. What we're seeing other counties that's doing this is they take a thousand dollar failure to pay, they pay it off within four or five times because every time you pick them up, they come up with two hundred and fifty bucks. So, they're coming up with it, they're paying it, and it's, it's crazy, instead of making their payment, they'll wait till a warrant's issued, we pick them up, bring them to jail, they come up with two hundred and fifty bucks. But, it's getting fines paid, it's, it's, it's hopefully, the judge and the court clerk's officer seen as a revenue increase to get fines paid and to, um, help put some revenue back into the court fund, to different funds like that. Second is stolen property, stolen property's up, we're recovering it. Last, yesterday about ten eight, well, between, today's Tuesday, so between Sunday night and Monday morning, had a two thousand sixteen Polaris Ranger stolen, one mile west of Leek Wire on highway thirty-one, from hog farms. Deputy Wharton and Deputy Johnson, Misty Johnson, they worked almost ten hours on it. I came in last night for about four or five, was able to get it located, got one guy in jail, gonna put another one in jail for it. You know, they drove it hard, hotwired it, it's gonna need some work done on it, but we recovered it. While we recovered it, we also recovered a flatbed trailer. Flatbed trailer, we thought was one of our burglaries that we had here in, or one of our trailers stolen from any county, it's not gonna be, but they removed the metal plate along with, there was a serial number or a VIN number stamped on the side of the trailer, they've grinded it off as well. So, we've got guys today looking to see if there's another VIN or serial number stamped on the ax or somewhere on the bottom side of the trailer. If not, we're gonna try an acid recovery system where you can put some acid on that metal and sometimes it brings the number back. We've working with the city, Dunn Country had a truck stolen the other night and they had another one that somebody had taken the key box off of. We believe it's gonna be somebody from out in the Hoyt area. They ran through a fence out there, stole a tag off of another truck out in that area, so we're working on it. We're seeing an increase due to the seven eighty, I mean, you know, folks can say that's not what it is, but we haven't had these problems before. We've had, we've had them in small doses, but not like we're seeing them right now. Trash pickup, I wanna start something, hopefully with the commissioner's help. I'd like to start one day a week, Aaron and the trustees going somewhere in the county and picking up trash. Spending, you know, one day that Aaron hasn't got anything going on, taking the trustees, through Kyoto Lander Road one week, through Perry Road one week, and just rotate, but I wanna, I wanna try that. I wanna try to find some area, um, and try, try to start that program. I'm working on the Beautify Oklahoma grant, we didn't get it this year. I believe we'll get it next year, but we gotta show that we have a program in place and what we're gonna, why we need the funds. If we don't have a program, they're gonna fund ones that are in place, so I'm trying, I wanna try to start something and work, work toward that to get that done.
What's that grant worth?
Well, I can tell you Macalister got fifty-six thousand, Aitair County got forty-eight thousand, Squeak County got roughly fifty, so you're in a fifty thousand dollar price range. What that would do is that would pay an employee as part of a maintenance, um, an operation of that employee, that's what that would pay. The other thing that they're doing, that other places that are doing, they're, they're helping with their maintenance and operation, any cans, metal they pick up on the side of the road, they cash that in, put that into account and that helps keep that program going. So, wanna start that. Currently working on the jail policy procedures, I was hoping to have that done by next week's jail meeting. I don't see that being done, it's more than what I thought. It's, um, it's gonna be five or six hundred pages when I'm done with it. I'm going through, um, three different jail policy procedures from three different counties that are equally to our size, but as you know, policy procedure, everybody does something a little differently. So what I'm doing is I'm reading the policy along with the state guidelines and seeing which policy best fits our facility. And what I'm also doing is, is the ones that fit our facility but aren't a hundred percent to what we need, I'm making those corrections and adjustments. So hopefully by, um, the October jail meeting, we'll be able to approve that and then bring it in front of the commissioners to get it approved that way. It's a tedious project. Thirdly, um, is the vehicle purchases that the sheriff's office is currently looking at. Two vehicles, one's a two thousand eighteen Dodge Durango. With the Dodge Durango fully outfitted, it's thirty-eight thousand and some change. Now that's lights, it's everything, that's the vehicle, that state bid, and then the equipment that goes in the vehicle. The truck is thirty-seven thousand, um, it's some change, thirty-seven to thirty-six I think. Uh, my question to the commissioners are, is, um, the state statute has a provision that talks about if the sheriff does not accept the vehicle allowance, which I do not, because we don't have, financially don't have the money, then a vehicle can be purchased for the sheriff out of the highway T account and it's, it's a provision. So my thought would be is, is with the commissioners to talk about it and to think about it, if you guys would be interested in helping, um, we put on a three-year lease purchase and then one year district one would pay, one year district two would pay, one year district three would pay. Wouldn't it?
You should talk about districts, cause it, it's highway T money can only be spent on roads and bridges.
It's actually a provision that says for the sheriff and it's, I'll read it to you.
Are you talking about coming, and you said, I thought you meant come out of the general fund?
No, it comes out, it comes out of, out of the commissioner's funds.
Oh, out of highway T? Well, I believe you, I mean, you printed it out for us. You don't need to rate it, but it'd be all right if you wanted printed out and give it to us.
I can do that.
I thought you was talking about out of the general fund.
No, it comes out of, out of the highway T.
Oh, okay.
And it comes out of the, and it says the commissioners, um...
Yeah, get us a copy of that.
I can do that, it's through the, it's, there's three different statutes that it reads. And one is the sheriff takes the vehicle allowance, two is the commissioners purchase the sheriff's vehicle, and three is does not apply because we're not of a population over five hundred thousand. But I'll get a copy of that to you, it's in our OSU handbook plus in the state statute. But, um, I'm wanting, I'm wanting, wanting to go ahead and purchase vehicles, but I don't think that financially, um, the sheriff's office can sustain two vehicles, which is what we need. Um, it would be approximately, if we did two vehicles at a five-year notice, it's gonna be about fourteen thousand dollars a year. And I don't think that we can financially, um, can financially do that with the current situation and us, you know, our cash accounts as low as they are, which is helping, you know, do our maintenance and operations across the board. So, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention to give y'all something to think about if y'all...
To guess that.
I'll get that to you.
You're telling us that.
So, other than that, we, other than that, we don't have any, anything else going on.
So your two vehicles, one's thirty-eight thousand...
One's thirty-eight, one's thirty-seven, yeah.
And you need two?
I need two.
And then what are you gonna do with the ones that you have now?
Well, the ones that I have Sandra, I have, they'll be put in our reserve fleet. I have only one reserve vehicle and like when I have lake patrol that, that we have right now, I have to have two vehicles. So somebody is having to, you know, borrow another, another unit. But I don't have anything for reserves to come out and drive. And the issue that we have is, you can say, okay, well, a reserve can drive one of the full-time guys' vehicles and go get it. But, you tend to not have things taken care of as well. A full-time guy, his vehicle is a newer vehicle and it's something that we wanna keep as long as we can. The reserves come, they pick the car up, they go work a shift, they come back and then, you know, yeah, they might clean them out, might, they might not, I mean, we, so we'd like to have three to four, that way, you know, ballgames are coming up, I can have a reserve come get a car, go to Kyoto ballgame, Stigler ballgame, basketball season. You, you almost need three to four reserve cars for holiday weekend and stuff, right now we only got one.
You only have one then, okay, so is the Jeep one of them?
No, the Jeep's the jails.
Okay.
The Jeep, the sheriff's office, it's wrote over to the sheriff's office, I've actually got Moner to get, we're gonna put it on the agenda to transfer it to the jail, the Jeep is the jails.
Okay, cause I knew it was in the sheriff's department.
We don't, yeah, we don't utilize the Jeep, that was for the jail and we're trying to separate, cause there's, there's a Tahoe that was purchased out of the jail that they used to use for the sheriff's office side. But due to the fact they're separate entities, we're actually in the process of setting up separate fuel accounts too, cause currently the sheriff's office pays for all the jail's fuel. Well, I wanna show that they're two separate. And the, you know, vehicle being bought out of a jail account and then paid for gas and maintenance out of sheriff's office account, we're kinda intermingling the two, so we're trying to currently get that.
Let the jail face all the electric and water and sewer out there.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, so we kinda...
I mean, but, I mean, I'm gonna, only thing I'm gonna say about that Paul, is other offices here in the courthouse don't pay those expenses. But I mean, you brought that up.
The courthouse has nothing to do with it, I said, we're talking about the jail, not the courthouse.
The jail's not the, I mean...
Yeah, I understand, but anyways, for another day.
All right, that's all I have at this point.
Question, uh, is there anything, uh, new about the cleanup on the storage of the old, two old buildings on the east side in the basement?
Not right, not, not, not this week Randy, we've been busy on stolen property this week.
As I understand, these are the items that are gonna have to be hazmat?
That's correct. And I'm losing my deputy that was, that was gonna assist me in that, I'm losing him to a better job with more money. So it's just gonna be me that's able to do that now.
When is he leaving?
Um, he'll be gone within two weeks.
Is there a chance of getting it done before he leaves?
I can try, but I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, we're, our call volume on stolen property right now is extremely high. I mean, we're, we're chasing stolen property every day. I've got two guys right now, we're covering twelve thousand dollars of stolen property stolen out of a building, so. And here's what they're doing, just like on this deal, they stole four different times and, you know, they were trying to keep it within that threshold of a thousand dollars, well they didn't. But, that's what folks are doing, is they're, they find a storage building, they're hitting it four or five times. And you know they're hitting it four or five times, when you start doing interviews, yeah, all weekend I worked on doing interviews on people that helped go load property, different person went with the same guy four different times and still there's more property, so we know he's went more than that, that's four times that they went. And one time they just loaded a generator, generator's six hundred dollars, that's a misdemeanor. So you've got five or six misdemeanors instead of five or six felonies, so. But, other than that, that's all we, that's all we have at the moment.
Hey, uh, under new business, I spoke with Gail this morning about our payments that we made since April. Uh, we made a total of a shortfall from our asset sales tax to make the jail payments in four months. It's total forty-three thousand five fifty-eight, uh, which is, uh, runs about ten eighty-nine a year, a month. So that, if you project that times twelve, that's gonna be a hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollar shortfall. It's gonna be subsidized out of the general fund to make that. The other thing I wanna bring to, to mind is, is that, uh, I did some projections on the sales tax income and if, as it goes right now, we're gonna be a hundred thousand dollars shorter than we were last year. And I think that is closer to reality to a hundred and fifty. So that brings a, um, pool on the deposit of the general fund of two hundred and eighty thousand six seventy-three. So, if, if, just anytime we start making drastic cuts, this is probably it, because they are coming.
Like, like we spoke before, I, I agree with you Randy, something's gonna have to give, no argument there. But we're gonna have to get pretty creative because to stay with, like I've said before, to stay in statutes and to be compliant with the law, there's only two people who can lay off. Unless, you know, there's one...
Lots of steps.
I, I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm just saying...
I'm just saying that somehow, we gotta put our heads together and start doing it.
We need to get to work on it.
We've got to start it.
Well, let me rephrase that, there is four people counting the two, Gail and Ron, they're not mandatory, but ever, just, you know, there's only two other people besides those two that you can get rid of and still be in compliance. But anyway...
I'm just bringing everyone's...
I appreciate, I appreciate it Randy, I do, and you're right, it's, it's something that's gonna have to be dealt with. So if anybody wants to write out a plan, you know, we'd be more than happy to look at it, if anybody has any ideas. Is there any more new business? If not, we're gonna move on to item number five, approve commissioners proceedings from previous meetings. You get a chance to look at this though. I'm making motion to move through item number five. Item number six, will be approved blanket VOs. And for this week, we have a two thousand dollar blanket VO to Rocket Natural Stone. And from SSF two, Free Corps, we have a thousand dollars. To jail, we have like eighteen hundred dollars to Performance Foods. So this three blanket VOs for this week, I need a motion.
I'm making motion for you.
Item number seven, we discussed considering signing August month reports for county clerk's office, election board and health department. Okay, I need a motion on item number seven. Okay, item number eight, we'll be discussing considering signing resolution disposal of equipment for treasury, assessor and election office. And Sandra, I guess that's some of the equipment that's in the basement and some others still in their office? There's some others still up on the third floor?
Yes. They did take some down to the basement because we had to make room. And, so a lot of it is down there. Was it, I'm not sure, Gail and Roger?
Is this just a copy because that says I don't know, I'm asking. Is there any, you know, I don't, I mean, if, if you...
I didn't do this.
You didn't do this one?
Okay, this right here is from the election board, so this is from Ron. In Port George, well, I said, did they move it to the basement of that sale?
There's some in the sale, there's some in our office. And I don't, there's a few things in the basement that I know that was in our office, but it's not in our admin board, so.
We will get yours out tomorrow, we'll get a copy of this, uh, and give it to Aaron if it's important again tomorrow to make sure that we get all the prices taken care of.
Do we have, what do we, what kind of equipment are we gonna have at our disposal as far as getting this stuff? Okay.
In the assessor's office, we have a desk calculator, four HP printers, four Dell, what's that, OptiFlex, two hundred, two eighty computers, desk phones, Doherty X easy share camera, PC smart hub, Panasonic camera, blue line printer, HP plotter, compact monitor. And that's, that's coming out of the assessor's office, that's what he's, he's got it marked jump. So that means it will be taken to the transfer station.
Is anything that, so this list does need to go to the dump and be disposed of?
Well, it's, yeah, it says jump.
Right.
So that means it's going to the...
Here's my big question for individuals, yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, here's my big question for, for anybody that's getting rid of anything that has the capability of storing information digitally, has it been properly light and cleansed and cleansed in order to be disposed of? Because if you've got a camera or if you've got a computer with a hard drive, anything that's stored information digitally, there is a way you have to get rid of that stuff, you can't just throw it to the dump because information can be stolen off of that.
Well, that's something you'd have to ask Roger in this situation. Cause I don't know if they took out, you know, like the cameras got the chip.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, I don't, I mean, that's just something you have to look at during the process of throwing it away.
Okay.
Don't you agree, I mean, that would be the time to check it out before you take it out there and dump it.
Right, I mean, really the department heads who are getting rid of this stuff should have already had this up light.
I know, but when y'all go in there...
I will check it, I will double check it. Yeah, I'll, I'll have it double checked.
I'm sure Roger took the chip out, I mean, I, but it's something you wanna look at, but anyway, you go in and sign this one for Roger.
Are we just gonna use my truck and the trailer, are we gonna have, do we have a lot of equipment, we're gonna have to fill stuff?
I think a trailer, truck and trailer would be sufficient.
Okay.
And hey, you know, you're just going out here to the transfer station.
Yeah.
You'll come back.
Yeah.
Cause I know there's two or three things in the basement, you know, it's gonna eat up some room on the trailer.
Okay.
Anyway, that's from the assessor's office and this is from the election board. They have oak desks, thermal blinds.
Thermal bond, it's a bonding machine.
It's a binding machine, okay, I see that now. Dell Opti Flex GX six twenty, another GX six twenty, a seven fifty-five, and HP Laser Jet twelve hundred series. And this equipment ranges from looks like three hundred and fifty to eleven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And then you have a metal ballot box, bags, three drawer file cabinets, folding table and chairs, and a key, a computer with a keyboard.
Actually, about three or four computers and keyboards and screens and everything, they're all there at this stage.
And this is checked here, it's listed as sold, did you sell it?
Supposed to be sold.
To be sold.
To be sold, that's the ones that go out to the markets and manage to hold it. When we get rid of our office and store it out.
Okay, and those, those are in your metal ballot boxes, those will all go to that cell building, okay?
Anyway, those items will be sold.
Okay.
Also, I might just mention, just, this is just for general information, we found out in the hardware when the auditors came in. Um, some of the stuff that had, that had been out of, that had been put junked before, there was no receipt where it was junked. And so thankfully, um, it was disposed of, and it went through the proper channels, but prior to me, all they wrote on the form was junk, you are supposed to have a receipt from the entity that junks it, saying that they received that and they took it in, so everything has-
Then you go out to the dump.
When you sell it, when you go to the dump, everything, there's supposed to be a list, and it's supposed to be attached to that junk note.
That might be a little difficult to contain at the transfer station, maybe, maybe you could write that out with some initial other side of it.
That's what I would do, we don't have anything, we're junking, but the other offices might want to consider that, that they might just have the transfer, even the resolution or something, probably the resolution.
That's what I was thinking, but Erin needs to take with them the check off and they need to sign it.
Yeah, I'll sign it, and I'll have the transfer station sign it, okay?
All right, for Gail Dixon's office, this will be disposed of old equipment and stores that does not work, two Monroe twenty twenty plus, two calculators. And it has both their serial numbers listed here, and one Samsung printer with the serial number. Those are the two items she's going to dispose of. So that, that will help some, on the amount of stuff in the courthouse, storing buildings.
What's the auction date?
She hasn't set one yet.
Paul, you auction?
I don't care to do it.
I've already asked, I just wanted to know.
We still have something in it?
We're going through everything to see if anything, a lot of the stuff they had's already been, I don't want to get into it. I don't know where.
I might have a few items in there, I won't say if you have. So I, we need a motion on item number eight to dispose or sell these items from the Treasury, Assessor, Election Office. Same with my motion, Clark second.
Commissioner, with your approval, what I might do, try to help draw folks out, is we have probably forty or fifty guns needing to be sold. Those guns have to go back to the asset forfeiture account, and it goes to the DA's asset forfeiture, then they'll write a check to the Sheriff's Office for the asset forfeiture, that the percentage that Sheriff's Office gets, had to be prior to my administration, but what I might do with y'all's approval is try to get that guns, this stuff ready for that gun sale, because that always brings a crowd out when you, when you've got some guns to sell.
Oh, yeah, the last time we had an auction-
You did it for us, we-
I mean, that, that was-
The DA's office made twenty-nine thousand dollars and sold less than a hundred guns.
Yeah, it was, it was a good part.
It just brought, brought a lot of folks out, so with y'all's approval, I might see with, give the DA's office, see if we can put thirty, thirty or forty of those guns in that auction, just to draw folks out to the sale.
Can you put all of them in there?
I don't know what's, what is, what is, stuff that's heat, that's been seized, and Pittsburgh County has to be sold over there, stuff that's been sold here, has to be sold here. I know that we have thirty or forty guns right now, ready for shi, ready for sale, they're already, everything's ready to be done. And I have those guns separated out, so, um, if they have some other orders that we can go through and get that ready, all I, all I have to do is find, try to get with Dennis or somebody, because what we'll do is have an FFL there that day, and there'll be a twenty-five dollar surcharge added to every gun that's sold, that way it's registered to that person when they leave. They do all their backgrounds and everything, and last time we done it, we had to hold the guns seven to ten days, and we need all the backgrounds ourselves. We won't do that again, we'll have an FFL come, let them have a surcharge to do their background, and a lot of, we had twenty-something guns that people bought, that wasn't able to buy guns, well, they'd already paid for them, they lost their money, I mean, because you had felons trying to buy guns, they paid for them that day, we do backgrounds on them, they're convicted felons, can't have a gun, they-
I thought that, they can come back like two, three days later and get the gun.
Seven days, we did, we did the gun sale on a Saturday, and then that, that next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we give guns to the people that bought them after their background.
Yeah, I thought that, I knew there's a whole-
But if you guys don't mind, I'll, I'll try to get some of those guns ready.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, sounds good. All right. Okay, item number nine, is discussed, consider signing resolutions to designate where South County Road forty-three ninety-five ends, and to explain to the board several, several years ago, when I say we, the county was doing your nine-one-one system. I have the GPS coordinates and everything, that, and on the map, the road stops, if y'all know where Ross Wilson lives. John Barry, when at the time, went from the Caligard all the way up the mountain, up in the mountains, and had that on the, he's got it on the, it's not on the mapping system here, but it's on the GPS coordinates, showing it's a county road, but there's no way I'm going up on top of a mountain. Just, I just want to start maintaining the top of that mountain. And then it's, and then even on the county map, you can look at any of it, it stops right there, and that's the GPS coordinates and and then we're starting the process to take that little red line off and get on the GPS coordinates, because it doesn't show up on the map, we want to do away with it, because we're not, I'm, I'm not going up in the mountains, sake. Taking care of the Gaswell Road. But anyway, it all come about, there's seven thousand acres up there, the state of Oklahoma is making a hunting club out of it for people that live in Oklahoma City. And there would be numerous people driving through his front yard, so they've agreed to come on eighty-two, and come down your county road, and then they can access all that property off a county road, and not have to go through anybody's private, private drive. So, but they're planning on bringing a lot of things from Oklahoma City deer hunting through their, their deer season this year.
This is not gonna be a wildlife management area?
Maybe it is.
It is gonna be, and it's gonna be under, it's gonna, if you hunt up there, you're gonna have to follow their guidelines, there's only so many times you can drive a buggy, or there's a lot of rules, and you'd wanna, you're gonna get the book and read it, because-
There's another access, is, ain't there, Gaswell Road?
The Janikowski property, south of Kennesaw.
Yeah.
The Janikowski, it's back south on the mountain, back south of Kennesaw, and it actually goes from eighty-two highway to highway two. It's that whole section back south.
The whole seven thousand acres.
And they're actually, and I was gonna tell Paul after me, but the Wildlife Department is gonna have a town meeting down there, because it's actually going to create some issues, as of right now, you know, there's thousands of people that go back there and ride ATVs and-
Well, I know.
They're, they're trying, they're, they're shutting that off.
If you go by the handbook, or what, their handbook, or whatever you want to call it now, there's only certain times, you cannot get off the trails. But who? If you're cutting through there and there's nobody within five miles of you, who's gonna get off the trail, you know what I mean?
And they're gonna put, I think they're gonna put a recreation area back there, from what I understood?
See, I got, well, I slay myself, my grandparent, father had place on San William Long Store, he's got twenty-five acres up there, went through them, and I'm like, who's gonna, how y'all gonna keep people off other people's properties? Because I got twenty-five acres up there.
They, when they lease this, when the Wildlife Leas-
Yeah, they're gonna paint it perfect, I'm like, who?
They didn't understand that Janikowski, there's, you know, he has seven thousand acres, but in the middle of the seven thousand acres, there might be a hundred acre plot that somebody else has.
I got twenty-five acres.
And he, I mean, and involves twenty-five, I mean, so they're having some issues on how they're gonna try to regulate folks.
I'll tell you what he told me, they're gonna spray paint it, and I'm like-
That's what I heard.
Okay, you're gonna spray paint seventh up? Anyway.
Have the same issues over south of my curtain, on the Madden deal, where people own the land back in there, but there's another access up there, Paul, over there, off Cooper Bend Road, it's a there's a Gaswell Road that goes up there.
Cooper Bend?
Over there where Leon Matthews lived.
That's what I'm talking about, it was, that's-
Is it?
That's not a county road, that is a county road.
It's never been a county road, has it?
No. Well, that's why I'm here for that reason today, Ross couldn't be here because he had attended funeral at ten o'clock, and, uh, the main thing is, the county document, that that's not a county road that goes through his yard, more or less.
It is through his yard.
Yeah, it's right in front of his house.
It's his front yard.
And the Wildlife Department, their intention first, it sounded like, they were just gonna turn all the people in through his yard, uh, to get to Janikowski's land. Since it's not a county road, John made that mistake years ago, and I, and we was aware of it when he did it.
But we all know why it happened.
Yeah.
But that's-
It's the same reason some of the numbers are on the wrong side of the street, stuff like that, you know? But he made an error, and went all the way to the top of Second Mountain, and mapped that in. But it wouldn't, and so it wasn't a big deal until turn, turning the wild, all the people in there.
But the problem is-
I'm also a property owner over there in that area too, I have a cabin there.
City people pull that up on their phone.
Yes.
And you see that red line, and it's not a county road.
Right.
You can go to ODOT, it's not a county road.
It never has been, but-
But when somebody pulls it up on their phone, and they never step foot in Haskell County, they're just gonna be driving right through everybody.
Yeah.
So, but I talked to the guy that's in charge, they're all of them, you can tell Ross, they're all of them are supposed to go down eighty-two highway and go back west on that county road, and then they can access the whole seven thousand acres, and hope their spray paint works, because it won't, but
Yeah.
But that's, he agreed to that, that's the access they would use.
Yeah. I think basically Ross makes some
I've got him-
A little temptation here, that, that's on a county road, and, uh-
Levender pain is legal post-assignment.
I have it right here, we have a sign, but you can use it. I just wanted to explain to the board and the legislature, that you can check this GPS coordinates. I got it off the city, from Kenny Maylock. Pull it up, it'll be right, and it'll be right with the ODOT map.
The desk of the people can come over.
I'm gonna make a motion, son. They use it mostly on the line. Even the meetings over, you get a copy of this.
Okay, yeah, I'm supposed to take him back to coffee.
But tell him I talked, I called that old boy, and he said they were definitely gonna use highway eighty-two. But I mean, I don't, you know, you never know where those people gonna come out of.
And he's gonna be confronted, confronted with people that shows up there at that log gate and say, my phone says that I can go this way, see?
I'm gonna take, we're working on the process, taking that off, but it's not gonna happen over that.
Might put a sign up there that says it's been decommissioned or whatever. Whether it'll do any good or not, it'll, it'll deter the honest people, you know?
But not just people driving through folks' land up there, I mean, we're gonna have, with folks coming in, we're gonna have several search and rescue missions, because it's a problem. Folks don't realize that, there's, there's cliffs back there, you fall, I mean, they, it's gonna be a bad deal.
I've been up there only twenty-five, it's yeah, it's gonna be a problem for somebody that's not used to being in that.
It's very rough country, we're in. Yeah, this is where the couple, with their little girl disappeared, the Jamesons, their body was found, their bodies was found.
Yeah, it is. I'm like, Tim, there's gonna be a lot of search and rescue going on.
Yeah, they just, like, half a mile from my cabin, fuck are they?
But-
Ninety days ago, we have an individual comes down from Tulsa, go down there, they find a cabin, just a cabin that's been built, they stay in it. He takes off walking, he wanders, can't figure out how to get back, his buddy's leaving, three of them leave, go back to Texas or Tulsa, they leave him there. We find him four days later, and he's in bad shape.
Not very good buddies.
I mean, no cellphone service, they thought that, they thought that he had a girl picking him up, because he was supposed to go meet a girl, they thought he'd got a ride, he got lost. And they start trying to get ahold of him, can't get ahold of him, no cellphone service, and he's back there for four days, and luckily we found him, but-
You're gonna probably have a lot of that, because they're gonna start hunting, when's the hunting season? I guess-
October one, it'll be-
October one, I guess they're gonna blast in there. I hope they have the painting done, because I still don't see how that's gonna work. So I made the motion on item nine. Okay. Item number ten will be discussed, consider signing ODOT Federal Merch, Believe Project Damage, the Beadham Mountain Road, and this is the work that we did on, make the bridge, and I kept up with the time and the hours, and, uh, it'd just be money put back in Miami-Dade. There's rock tickets and messed up my, I just gotta get that in there, do, do as many as I can. Yeah, that's the one I'm gonna put Miami-Dade, get it back. It's for six thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. I was though, but it turned out pretty good. I guess some tests, and then I make a self-confidence, I get off every day, I gotta mail, get that back to them. Someone make a motion on item number ten. And that brings up the question, we have EMS meeting at, y'all wanna just sign papers and recess then? So we'll just move on to item number eleven, until eleven o'clock. Okay.
Paul's story?
Yes.
Hi, I want to just mention briefly, there are a bunch of chairs up there that, uh, need to be disposed of. I don't think anybody knows who they belong to.
No, I don't.
I think some came out of every office, probably, and have just been piled up there.
There are a lot of them, we talked about that last week.
Are they good enough for the auction, Rhonda? Some of them have molten color.
Very positive.
Some people buy just an old chair, throw it to barn. Yeah, one cabinet.
I have one in my tree stand, my tree stands up.
We bought lots of them, office chairs to put in suit, deer blinds.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Pretty nice too.
That's what I have.
They're like twenty dollars apiece, and they're about four hundred dollar chairs.
You drive right to the end of the deer, if you just got a tractor, they just ignore a tractor.
Well, they come running, thank you for feeding them.
I started to say, I, I have pictures, I took just a couple of weeks ago, and eaten with my-
They ain't eating here by another mall.
Y'all drank their coffee up, everybody's getting a cup.
I'm not drinking, I'm pouring, making more.
I know, y'all need to drink it up. I drank with you, but I, I'm not a coffee drinker. Surely somebody else drinks coffee. Tim have a cup?
No, no.
It's not going to.
Say people that drank coffee live longer. Scientific study and you know, there's never been a scientific, scientific study.
Right, right. I don't.
One inch in width.
I drank one, I'll put whipped cream chocolate, so I might not live longer, but I'll live happy.
Be happy.
How wide does it stop?
One inch.
One inch?
One inch wide, eight inches, at least eight inches long and not closer than three foot to the ground and not more than five foot from the ground.
What's that?
On the purple stripe.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they do it on a lot of that timber company land down south, they just purple stripe the trees. Ever so distant, ever so far.
No, long, they use it long and one inch wide because you can do it on T posts. You can do it on blue of the sign, you have to, I think you have to post one sign on the gate, on your gate, say, saying what it is.
There's one more on Second Mountain, forty-three ninety-five. That's where it started, over there, where the road all the way up there matched that in there years ago, it wasn't a big deal. Look how that, that, that loss could tell if you come a big deal. Well, I, I'm just going to bring everybody in from grasses there. I do just like it.
A thousand foot. Thousand feet deep. Whatever thousand feet.
They actually have access.
Where you could do it, T posts, because it'd be one inch wide. Uh, one inch wide, eight inches long.
Janikowski owns that all the way up to the. The crossing's right up here nowadays, but this worked out and so everybody started using that and coming up here. What we better do is open that crossing back up and maybe stay on Janikowski's land. And Janikowski's got a lot of roads, all around, all those caves. And Janikowski Gas Well, we work on the. Roads, you get back in there, you call some weird dogs back in there. They been back in there and face some strange cars.
Wonder what they up to. What they're up to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. See that couple with the kids disappeared and right there in my cabin, they were going to drop that pen. Found them right there.
How far are you from Upper State Park?
You thought I was.
How far are you from it?
Way across the line, seven, eight miles.
Oh, you're a good one. You used to go in over there and come out.
You, yeah, you, you still can, you, you can get through there. It's getting more and more difficult because of the, uh, because so many people. And now people locking gates and this and that.
We used to back in there riding four, five years ago and there's a little cabin back in there. And there's people left notes in there.
Get people from. A lot of different places.
We used to ride back south with the nose back in there, used to ride horses back south with the nose.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
We, we worked through there, out to Bengal, come out of there, eighty-two looking good. Tallahana then they go down and go back, right at the top of the hill there, that's where you drop off to Tallahana, there's a road. There's a big, big switchback. We'd fall off in that holler and you would be back in there, no phone service, no, nothing.
Yeah, you see all that winding stairs over. They pull off for people to pull up.
Hauling heavy loading.
Yes, exactly. You ready for it?
I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion that would recess the county.
Like everything going okay waiting?
All good. You know, staying busy?
Oh, yeah. I don't know what I can do, I don't know. I need body heat.
Okay, moving on to item number eleven, sign appropriate transfers, appropriations, checks, receiving BOs. I'll make a motion, we approve that, item number eleven.
Paul Story?
Yes. Item number twelve is the German, need a motion. Now, second.